The microphone is kinda like-
Denise, this is the agenda of the regular board meeting, president and board trustee, village, county, Illinois, today at December 12th, 2017. At this time, I will ask for a trust to take a roll.
Trustee staff?
Here.
Trustee Bonner?
Present.
Trustee Garcia?
Here.
Trustee Greer?
Here.
Trustee Richardson?
Here.
Trustee Claybrook?
Here.
Former president until he stands in such a reason.
Let me do this. To the flag of the United States and our empire, and truly public, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any approvals or corrections of the minutes of the board meeting that were held on November 28th, 2017? Any corrections to the minutes? Then I will ask for motion to approve the minutes that we were from November 28th, 2017. Make the motion to approve the minutes that they were. As a motion to approve by trustee Claybrook to approve the minute of the board meeting that was held on November 28th, 2017. Do you need a second?
I'll second.
Second my trustee Cap, let's go to take a roll, please.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer? Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yeah, motion passed, thank you. Honored the citizens speak, if you have anything to say to the board, if you would stand up and give us your name, your reasons for addressing the board, and we will be glad to entertain you and thank you for accepting an invitation, an invitation, you being invited here tonight. At this time, I will ask for a motion to open the meeting to the public.
Motion to open the meeting to the public?
A motion to approve by trustee Garcia, do you need a second?
I second the motion.
Second by trustee Bonner, let's go take a roll.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
This is a motion passed, meeting is now open to the public? This Saturday, anyone on here have something to say?
Yeah, I have something to say. I was just reading it say about the water going up and so on and so on, so I would like to know about that.
Well, yes, the water rate is going up, and I think we had mentioned that some time ago. And it is necessary and imperative that we have to do that, we have to do it. We certainly do not want to do that, but our water fund is underfunded, we have to raise it. We're in the process of acquiring, of trying to acquire a loan from the Illinois EPA scheme. And we don't have the money to do it, what would cost probably 1.2 million dollars to change the meter out? And it's necessary, and if we do that, the meetings are old, they inefficient, and we just have to do it, basically.
Okay, you have to raise the water on us. Most, majority of the people in this room are senior citizen, and we on a fixed income. So even if EPA, whomever you trying to get the money from, we, the peoples here, doesn't really have the money to pay the big bill.
Well-
That we're, that, that I say, I'm not really using all that water.
Well, and you also talking to a senior citizen that's sitting ready in the center.
Yeah, but I'm more senior than you are.
I'm also-
And you, and you, you saying getting a check, another check, quote, unquote.
Well, believe me, the check I get here is very miniscule.
I'll trade you.
Somebody trade for it.
But it's, and it's a very nec- it's a very necessary commodity, you know, that we have to do this. But we put it out there. I told people last year, I said, I'll tell you now, I mean, before the election, so I said, I don't want anybody to come back and say, well, the mayor didn't tell us. I told everybody then. Can't, can't we fight this?
Yeah, we can fight this.
I wanna-
No.
Let's fight. It's already long.
We can fight it.
It's already long.
Let's go pick it.
I wanna ask-
Can I ask you something?
Get on, John, a sever.
He's still on this side right now.
Why are you trying to-
He's still on this side.
And let me say also that, I mean, the board, or the mayor, corporate authorities, I mean, we don't want to pass anything on you, or whatever we pass on you, we have to pay it too. We have to pay it too. Or you go pick it for it, we have to pay it.
Andrew Johnson, I just, you know, whenever something that, you know, I understand sometimes something has to be raised, et cetera, et cetera. Right now, do you have any idea whether the percentage, whether it be five percent what we've been paying, or 10%? Or do you have anything about what percent raise it will be, or you do not?
159% is what the raise is gonna be.
Well, thousand percent out.
I don't like to deal with the figures, but the figures is like at least six thousand something more per gallon.
Six, uh, six dollars, uh, what?
On top of 4.25.
Six, six dollars more per three months or something for, for-
Per thousand.
Per thou- per thousand gallons, is that it?
Coming in.
What about the out, these were-
Okay, alright.
I was just trying to see what you were asking.
So that'll be done at the next meeting on the 28th.
Can I ask, my name is Brian anyways. Are you still on that side? Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, man, you keep saying we have to do this, what is, why, why, why does this have to happen?
Well, because again, as I said, the water meters have to be changed out, and we don't have the money to do it. And like I said, it's gonna do about a million point two dollars.
Why do they have to be changed out?
Because they're 70 years old.
And because they old, they about 20 or 25 years old, they inefficient. They just not, they just not up to par, and we just need to change them out.
May I have your name, please?
Derek Yancy.
Thank you.
Uh- And let me say another thing, that, I mean, this situation, I mean, if it's not done now, it certainly gonna be, can gonna be kicked down the road till later. And, you know, so it's still gonna have to be done, and eventually, the Illinois EPA is gonna be on our back because of the water loss that we have, I mean, that we, that our county budget, I mean, undocumented.
But we had that water loss. I haven't had-
That water loss taken care of six years ago. And we continue to lose money every year.
I'd like to get that one.
Well, I just wanted to know, I haven't had anyone at my house to read the meter for months. And, or leave, or leave the, the note, you know, to read your own meter. And all I get is estimate, 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 estimate.
You'll be punished if you do that estimate, huh?
I mean, I'm glad you brought that up, I mean, our system and our process here certainly needs to be improved, it needs to be amended. And I hope by the next amendment, by the next meeting, that I hope that we be making an announcement as to how we gonna improve that. But it certainly does need to be improved, and a lot of the meters are estimated. And when we do that, we do not charge any late penalties, I mean, because we didn't read it, and it's our responsibility. And the, and so we have some reform that we need to-
Well, we're losing money all kind, because it's not been read.
We gonna do that.
Because of mastermaker.
We try to get the readers now, and hopefully right after the first of the year, and hopefully we very pick that-
But I mean, if you're gonna raise it 200% of whatever you're gonna do, then you need to implement a better way-
Yes.
-to have these meters read so that everybody's not estimating.
But we'll get them out there, for sure.
I mean, estimation is out of, out of the question. Especially, why, why, why is the rate gonna have to be so much?
And your point is well taken, I mean, your point is well taken, because in order for us to get the loan, we have to be able to show that we can pay the loan back, and we have to be able to show that we can replenish the account, like I said, replenish the, the fund, or the, the audit is, is underfunded and it's in the red. We have to try to show that it-
Well, isn't there anywhere else we can cut so that everybody doesn't have to take a 200% hike in water?
Well, I mean, we're gonna be billing on a monthly basis-
Does anybody research that?
We're gonna be billing on a monthly basis, and therefore, if you get it on a monthly basis, then it, you know, should, I mean, hopefully it gonna be as bad as it is.
It's as bad as it is.
What, what's the terms of that?
Okay, are there any more questions over there?
Yeah, what this thing I got here saying, the, the water bill gonna be $94 every three months, and then if you don't read that, it's gonna be $396 every three months.
Well, I don't know where you got that from, but that is not correct. Now, I would also say that some people were probably putting out false information.
No, no.
I mean, but that is not-
Anybody wants to just have that checked when you leave here, I'll be glad to show you the numbers.
Okay.
It's just based on the numbers.
If it doesn't come from here-
I don't know where it came from, but I know I got it in my hand.
You're not reading it properly.
I know I'm not reading properly, but it's good enough you don't understand what I'm saying.
I agree.
I agree, I agree with you.
Yeah, I know I'm not reading it directly what's saying on that paper.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Brown.
Yeah, I told, he was saying I'm not reading it correctly, I say, I know I'm not saying exactly what's on this paper, but I'm saying it well enough for you to understand what I'm saying. So that's what I'm, that's what I was trying to say to that young man over there. So, but I still saying, if our water bill goes up, and we're not using all that water, we are paying IPA or EPA for, for the losses.
Okay, well, after we change the meters out, I mean, after we change the meters out, I mean, I mean, they will be accurate, and it'll be right to the point, and they have, they have brand new meters, and they'll be read on a monthly basis.
Okay.
I mean, a monthly basis.
Okay, my, I read my meter myself and, and give it to whomever in that office.
And some people do, but like I said, we're gonna improve that, we're gonna improve, we need to make a, we need to make a adjustment, we need to make an improvement, and we will do that. You got my word on it.
Well, we got that word, but we don't want that high price. I love it.
Well, I don't want it either, but we'll have to say it. Are there any other comments over here? Are there any other comments on this side?
Just one, my name is Brenda Taylor. I wanted to know, how long do you think this is gonna last, if we, would you do this, and pay more money, that you get the loan, and we're gonna get, all of us are gonna get the new meters, and then how long do you think it'll take for us to pay it off, the loan off?
Twenty years.
It'll go on to 20 year duration.
Twenty years. We'll be gone. We'll be gone. Mayor, how long have you been in office? Thank you.
And what's the relevance of that?
Well, because I know that the meters that are in the village-
George, I may, she has a floor, thank you.
Yes. Because I know that the meters in the village of Burnham are old. And they're not 25 years old, but they're 70 years old. Why now, instead of when you first came in office, this wasn't approached and gradually raised, instead of 159% in and 1,000% out? You're not losing money on going out, you're losing money on coming in.
Well, we did have a proposal-
How long ago?
In 2009, in 2009, and, and we was thinking that we should have done it then, but then some other things-
Should've, could've, would've.
Some other thing that happened since then, so it's kinda like that maybe we should, maybe we shouldn't, because we'd have had more money. And then some other thing had occurred, so I'm not really sure, but it would've been a good idea.
So we're gonna pay, all of us seniors are going to pay-
Well, everybody's gonna pay.
For the village's mistake.
It's about a hundred thousand dollars a year for every year.
For 20 years. Do you really think that's fair to your constituents?
Well, again, in order for us to change the meters out, we need a million-
We don't get meters.
Two hundred thousand dollars.
Us for a year? We don't get meters. You know what that landlord's gonna do to us?
No, no, your meter's gonna be divided, right, you'll have one meter, and it's about the same like you're doing now, right now.
We have one meter-
Right.
For 39 people. One meter for 39 people. He's already rating us on water and electric, and you guys have done nothing, we've been to several board meetings.
But one thing, but you, I mean, those meters are old, and they slow in reading, or whatever the case is. And once we get these new meters, they will be accurate, and they will be up to date, and they will be on a monthly basis. I'm sure you're using more water.
That has nothing to do with anything.
Okay, but I'm gonna tell you-
You know what, Chicago just raised their water rates and their sewer rates, guys. You know what they raised it? 29%. It's a hell of a lot bigger than what we are.
And we pay every three months.
Yeah, but Chicago got the-
159% really, Mayor?
And the new meters-
Your point is well taken, are there any other questions?
Yeah, I do have one other question about Park. A year ago, you were in our park with Bill, the landlord. You walked over to an electrical meter that had been, the cement had broken free from the ground, and it's just strapped up. Any winter winds could take it down. Guess what, that was a year ago, Mayor, still strapped up, holes are still laying around.
Well, that's actually the code enforcer, which have you given to the code enforcer?
You were told to give it to the code enforcer. Code enforcer drives through, doesn't get out of the car, and then drives right back out.
Well, stop him or call to the office, you have the, it's okay for you to do that.
You were with the owner, you said you were going to have it taken care of, here it is a year later, still not. Still not.
Make a request.
Excuse me, may I have your name, please?
He knows it. Carol Dilly.
Thank you.
Are there anybody else on this side?
Okay, when you first opened the meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, Joyce Bishop on Calhoun. Correct me if I'm wrong, you said it's already a law, it's been passed. How could you have done this to your constituents, the people that you claim to represent, and not give us any open, public meetings or hearing of any kind? Where are our democratic rights and due process?
Well, again, like I said, this is something that has to be done.
No, that's not the answer to the question. Did you make a statement, am I correct, if I'm wrong, please tell me. Did you not make a statement, it's already passed? I just wanna know, yes or no, Mayor?
I mean, this is something that had to be done.
Yes or no, please?
This is something that had to be done, and I would like to say this-
You won't get an answer.
And I like to say this very clearly.
I mean, for the record, if, I mean, when utilities companies, you know, whether it's ComEd, whether it's Nitro, whether it's People Gas, or whatever the utility company is, I don't think they called anybody-
Was this already passed? The question was, was this already passed? No, I, I didn't ask you that, I asked you, has there already been a decision by you and the rest of this board, on behalf of Burnham, to do this to us, and after the fact, not beforehand? There was no communication or notification issued, no community meetings like you had, the community police watching circulated to any of the residents here?
Well, we've already been through that, yes, we already did that.
Has anyone here heard of this previously?
No.
We have it at Burn School, I got the dates and everything, and we have, we didn't have it this year, but we have had it-
Okay, so something that made you thought of previously, okay? But there was no open meetings. A mention is totally different than a law, because when that lady was talking over there, I don't know your name, ma'am, with the purple scarf, you laughed and said it's already been passed.
You've already lost.
That's right, correct, correct. So, and what have we lost? Now, let me ask you a question, you said the EPA is gonna be down on us. For what reason, what brings the EPA here? What are the problems with our water or the handling of the situation? And why could not our village, which is low economic and highly contained with seniors, not apply for a grant? Instead of a loan? And the purpose of the loan, I would like to see, and I think maybe some of the other residents that live in our town, would like to see how much is being allocated to this loan, and specifically, what it's going for. That Mr. Yancy claimed, and he's rightfully claiming that, there is someone on the payroll to come and read the water meters, and evidently not doing their job, not even passing out the postcard.
And that will be taken care of, and that will be taken care of, and that will be addressed, and-
Okay, that's one thing that will be taken care of. But you made the statement about the EPA, okay? You said this is an open meeting, that the loans would be paid back, at what interest rate? How much the loan would be, you said 1.2 million dollars? And what is the duration of the loan?
What I'm gonna say is 20 years.
20 years, okay. And so how much a year are we gonna be paying? It's an interest-free loan, but why has not anyone in this room thought to reach out to the residents, okay? Have, excuse me, fundraisers, if the need is so dire, or put together some kind of program, an assistance program, whatever you wish to call it, consider the people in the community?
Senior citizens.
Well, now, you know as well as I know, that any time that you have an apartment, and that is a revenue-producing apartment, you know it. I mean, there is no grants available for that, you know that.
That's not correct, that's not correct. The city of Chicago, the Metropolitan Water Recreation District, and Streets and Sanitation, and all of them received great money. Yes, Denise, thank you.
Your time is up, please.
Sir, is there any way, seeing how passionate the residents feel about this, is there any way that we can come to a medium, a meeting round?
Is there any way this can be held at bay until there's an open meeting, notification is given to the entire community, you bring them in here? Can we repeal this ordinance or law that was passed previously by you without our knowledge?
No, we need to present this-
No.
We need to move it forward, and we will try to work on some other, I mean, avenue to assist the seniors in terms of the speakers next year, some other areas of concern that we can do to have to benefit the seniors. But if this goes, it really needs to, I mean, continue to move forward.
Unfortunately, I am explaining something that I feel very strongly with. I have 35 years in law, and why have you not reached out to somebody at the state level to try to assist this community with this serious problem?
And why you never really called to benefit if we hadn't gotten a water meter read from you in a long time? And why you never get that?
I did call, and I left a message for Brandon, he called me back and never came, Mayor.
Well, I'm not, I'm not there, I'm coming right back.
Oh, that has nothing to do, you didn't give an answer questions. Thank you, Denise, for your question.
Tom Cahill, oh, I'm sorry, Tom Cahill. I haven't been a long time Burn resident, 11, 12 years, something like that. Not a senior citizen, I can afford the increase. Here for all these people that can't afford the increase, which I have a lot of friends in the Burn area. It's your problem, you didn't address it early enough, you should have addressed it early enough. And if, at the very least, I believe somebody on that board should have said, maybe we can do something like this. 25% over the next four, or 100%, whatever the raise is, cut it quarterly over the next four years. This way, you could allow people to make an adjustment in their income.
And still live in their place.
And pay their bill, maybe get a part-time job at 80 years old, whatever they have to do to try to pay water bill. And pay water bill, that most people cannot afford, but some people can, and so it's less of a stress on them. But the people who can't afford on fixed income, you're taking maybe a quarter of their monthly income to go towards water and sewage. The sewage is really, everybody keeps talking about the water in. I understand water in. What happened to the sewage, 1,000% out of hand, out of hand? I understood you said that it's gonna be addressed at a different time, and that's really all I have to say.
Okay, well, again, thank you for your input, and again, we do not like, we not related to the fact that we did this, we needed to do this, and we had to do this, but it wasn't had to be done, it needed to be done, and we just have to move forward.
Okay, also, I wanted to say, also, I have a copy of the four-year report for the water bill and sewage. And why do we have to be charged, in case someone does cut their water off, $250? Why did that, why did it go up from $50 to $250?
That's a very good question, that's a good question.
And it possibly amend that for the citizens of Burnham?
Okay, I appreciate you for asking that. So it's not for a net for the city, of course, we would rather not turn it on.
I'm saying if, if someone was, water bill was-
I mean, that, you know what I'm saying, that was put in there to make sure that the people would come in and pay the bills, and would not be necessary for us to cut it off. So we have some people, sometime we turn the water off, and then they go and turn it back on, and then sometime they end up in damaged, you know, I mean, around where the B-bots or whatever, and we gotta pay, can't let see the plumbing to come out. I mean, now we gotta try to find them for that, and then-
That's happened five times in 16 years.
Correct that.
Come on.
Well, I don't think they should be charged that, and then also, they should make an appointment to come to someone's house, if you also pay them.
And sometime, sometime-
Saying we can just come in when you get ready, they need to amend that also.
Yeah, well, and we are taking a look at that, I think-
Making an appointment to come in.
Our neighbors only charge $60.
Maybe charge a hundred dollars for someone to cut their water back on, but-
No, in fact, it's $125.
So it's-
It's $125, not $145.
No, it doesn't say that, no.
I mean, that's for both.
It doesn't say that, man.
I got a question. $125. Other word, I mean, other word, that would discourage, that would make sure that the people come in and get the bill, so we don't have to cut it off. I mean, that's, I think it's terrible. Are there any other comments?
May I just have your name for the record? Don't go bad, thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name is Tony Ramos. Uh, which meters are you talking about that need to be changed out? Are you talking about the inside meters, inside water meters?
Yes, some of the inside.
Okay, because I just moved here like five, six years ago now, and when I first moved in, we didn't have a meter, so we had the cars come up every month, we filled them out every month, and then I had paid for a meter to put, be put in my, my home. I have a digital meter now, so I wanna say, why would we be needing to change meter? Why, why can't we just have each individual pay, pay, and have kind of the city plumbing come out and put in a meter?
Is there gonna be all digital there?
I have a digital there.
And also, how long will it take for them to talk?
Yeah, I just say, so why am I gonna pay the hike if I don't have a meter?
There's about 125 meters installed in this village, that are already digital meters, want to be installed there. They haven't decided that off the bill yet, they didn't come for it. Cause he want as much as he need.
And the village of Burnham is not trying to cypre money from anybody.
Yes, you are.
Like I said again, this is a village-wide plan.
We're going to the lowest levels.
And this is the process that every town does, to make sure, I mean, that it's accurate.
I understand the process, I understand everything else, but my question was that, if I already had the meter, why am I giving this, a hike to pay for an extra meter that I already have?
Well, no, the hike is not just based on the meter, the hike is based on the water. The hike also is based on the water coming in that we are getting-
Purchased.
And we have like about $600,000 budget to purchase water for a year.
Okay. And then how about the sewage out?
I think you spent $200,000, I believe right now, I believe, I believe that's after.
The sewage out, is it, are we gonna upgrade our sewage out, or what's going on? Because I have had problems with my, with sewage coming out, anytime it rains real hard, you know, disk gets really leaky, it, you can't walk through, you can't drive through here, is it, is there a plan to change that? With this hike that's going on, or are we just gonna just dump money into-
I mean, with the sewage, we're not gonna have very little impact as well, the sewage, and the water. The water reg would be going up the sewer, with every, every few, like, whatever. And we will be going-
Then why did you raise it to $11? Then why did we raise it to $11?
That doesn't seem very miniscule to me, I mean-
From $1 to $11?
It's not, not miniscule.
Anybody else ever come in on this side?
I do.
I, I, can I make one comment? My name is Brian, I live in the park, and it seems that everybody that's speaking is getting nowhere, nowhere. It seems like, I don't know if it's this board or you, it's already passed, that's it. You're just trying to pass the buck and explain things away, it's like, am I, are we wasting our time? It's already passed, it's in stone, is, is that, that's, that's the feeling I'm getting here. It's like, everybody that's, that makes a comment- It's like, everybody that's, that makes a comment, you know, it's just waved off and it's already done, it's already in stone, is.
And we're just.
Is that the case, if I, am I wasting my voice, are they wasting their voices? Can this be repealed, can it be changed, or are we wasting our time?
It doesn't impair that we get the meters changed out, and we do not have the money to do that.
I believe I paid about a hundred dollars to get my meter, so.
And again, it's not just the meters, the fact that the water fund, the underfunding, we got to get it caught off. We also.
I don't think a lot of people have pools around here to have the water fund, water fund it.
Again, I mean, again, I mean, I don't like it, but I know that you don't like it.
You can't, can you increment it like gradually instead of like all at once? You couldn't, you couldn't at least done that, instead of just bam, here's a, here's the big hike? You couldn't, this year raised it two percent, next a little more, a little more, you had to just drop the bomb all at once and raise it? You know, like I said, people, I live week, week, I live from week to week.
President, may I address the public please? My heart really, uh, Trustee Bonner, my heart really goes out to the people, really goes out to people, and it seems like that this is gonna be a huge financial constraint on the people. If there's any way that maybe we can do a smaller increase, maybe you can veto this ordinance, and if we can do a smaller increase and then maybe revisit it next year, if we have to, if deemed necessary.
Okay, that's a good idea.
Because if the payment for the loan is five thousand a month, and we're going up to seven dollars, that would still cover enough to pay, because we, according to our auditors.
That's a great idea.
According to our auditors, we spent eight hundred something thousand on water, was that correct? Million and eight, that's how much we spent on water, we're in the negative a million. Okay, but what we spent on water annually was eight hundred and something thousand, but we only took in five hundred from, from collection. Uh, once we get the new meters in, we can account for some of most of that water loss. And so we won't be spending as much, can we do a smaller increase at this time? My heart really, my heart is really going out to these people. I mean, Mr. Mayor, if there's anything that we can do to possibly veto this ordinance and, and, and maybe do a smaller increase, and then, and then increase it more if deemed necessary?
Well, like I said again, I mean, it is not our goal or our objective, I mean, to try to cypre money from the residents. Anything that we pass on you, then we also passing on ourselves. Now, if we reach out to the EPA, that the EPA assures us that we can move forward, that we still can get the loan, with us making adjustments, and who knows? I mean, but I will not promise you here tonight, I mean, if we, um, ask the board to rescind this, uh, if it will in fact would lead to this move.
Well, why, why was?
You can, you can do it again, right? You can do it again after a year and see how things go, after one year, we can look at it again after one year, that was a plan from.
I'm trying to get down to center what you said, you said you're gonna ask them to send this bill.
To the Illinois EPA, if they were, you know, you know, tell us that it would not jeopardize us getting the loan. You know, you changed the meter allowance, that's something we can take a look at. And like the trustee said, we probably shouldn't have made that decision.
So can we make the adjustment from eleven dollars to seven or eight dollars now?
That's a great idea. I like that idea.
Why should we be paying more than cash that city pays?
We buy our, we buy our, Kel City and all of them, Chicago.
He said we were underfunded, they paid seven dollars, so we should.
I think Trustee Bonner got a nice idea, this really nice.
That's an idea she got.
Don't y'all, don't y'all think?
That's a good idea, second emotion.
Has the loan already been okay by the EPA?
No, it's been, been, being processed.
So how can you raise the hikes without that loan already being given to you? Because the, from what I understand, this hike is supposed to take second, January first. So why are we gonna be paying for a loan that hasn't even been granted to you yet? Or approved?
But what if the people can't pay the bill? They're gonna be in more trouble.
I'm sorry?
If the people of Burnham can't pay it, you still gonna.
They'll be moving out.
That's right.
But then it's gonna be a ghost town, and everyone's gonna leave.
Is there any date when this loan is supposed to go through?
Well, again, like I said, I'm gonna say that's never gonna move on, that.
It hasn't been.
Let me ask one quick question.
We're gonna look at the situation, and if there's any way people can possible, that we certainly will come back to you, tell you.
Can I?
I'm not gonna tell you him tonight, I'm not gonna tell you, obviously, I'm trying to do that.
Mayor Pope, can I ask one quick question? Who was responsible for proposing the hike that was passed? Can you tell me that? Who was responsible for making that proposal instead of a gradual increase? Can I ask who? Who? An accountant?
The accountant for the village of Burnham?
Okay.
I just, I just wanna make a statement, when you make your mind up and re-appeal or whatever you're gonna do, are you gonna send out notification to the, uh, peoples in the Burnham? The mem, I mean, whatever, residents in Burnham?
Well, we do, um, plan to start having town hall meetings next year. And we're gonna go out through the whole village and explain from what's going on. We had, uh, planned to have one this Thursday at Burnham's too, but, uh, with the council, it's been, it's been a process from the beginning.
When is the next meeting gonna be, the president's coming up and all?
The next meeting will be December twenty-eighth.
We're gonna move it, we're gonna move it to Thursday, right, Tuesday? We're not gonna have it the day after, we're gonna move it back to Thursday.
That'd be here.
Well, no one was told about this, he just planned this.
It's not, it's gonna happen tonight, once the meeting gets moving along.
Correct, so you weren't gonna.
The meeting will always put on the agenda out there.
Oh, okay, so we can help look at it, okay.
Always. And the meeting will always be here, I mean, unless there's an emergency or something, we have to move it elsewhere. By state's factor, we have to have the meeting here always.
So we'll have some.
In my experience, sir, once there's things passed and you're collecting more money, you will never take that money back.
Yeah.
Never takes money back, you're right.
You know what, I, I, I don't like the increase just as much as any of you do, but sometimes in city government, village government, everything, in order to have, um, in order to have a, a, a base where you could have improved the village, sometimes you might have to raise things. I mean, this is a hike, I mean, it is an extreme hike, but a lot of times you do have to raise things.
Sir, you could displace thousands of seniors and citizens by that decision.
Couldn't it have came not just from the water income, couldn't it have come from other incomes also, instead of just from water bills? You couldn't have spaced it out to other things, just water?
Water, the revenue department, plus we have to spend a lot of money on water, so we have to be able to make that money back, and we have to be able to upkeep the system, there are certain things that we have to do from time to time, and a lot of water main, great infrastructure improvements we have to make.
So we're paying for your mistake, thanks.
I understand, but I don't break the water line at twenty-eight.
Let us speak.
Guys, you guys give me a chance, I'm ready.
Go ahead.
We're ready. My name is Gerald Hunter.
Three minutes, three minutes.
Oh, yeah.
Three minutes.
Anybody wants to stand up and concede your time to me?
Yes.
Um, July nineteenth, I asked for the village, uh, for flags. I'd just like to say that this building and the community center and the fire department all have flags, they're all nice flags. On the east side of town where I live, our public works building does not have a flag, our water department does not have a flag, and our senior center, where our seniors go, and could be veterans, do not have a flag. When you do decide to put a flag up, it'll be nice to make sure you do it properly, it's not some little stick with a flag sticking out like you done before.
Do they have flagpole?
No, um, number two, I think as residents. You're taking, you're taking my three minutes, you're taking my three minutes, you can answer after. As, as residents, all we can ask is, we should make sure that this board is charging us properly. They have not explained it, they have not done that. All I could say is, I've got a report here that the water department fund spent eight hundred and forty-six thousand dollars last year. Now, you said it was a million and eight, so either you guys gave me the wrong information, I was employed for the village too, just so many you know, I ran the water department, and I, I no longer work for the village. The person who now runs the water department is part-time out of Harvey. Um, they're paying somebody to come out here and decide the paperwork, and they pay him part-time. The person who actually runs the water department is your meter reader who can't come to your house and read your meter. He now runs the water department. Um, you do not have a superintendent looking over the water department and making sure that these people do as they're supposed to do. That's the job of a superintendent. That man there tried to marginalize that position and keep everything in his own control. That's why you have some of these problems right now. He is known for six years that the water loss was generating to about, excuse me, forty to fifty to sixty thousand dollars a year was being lost for many years. He knew that, and he can't deny it, because we contacted the, the, uh, DNR, was making us spend money, our engineering company do it, knew it, and myself and our engineering company pleaded with this man to change our meters over and over and over, because the water loss we had is coming from the meters. It's not from the pipes, it's not from theft, it's the meters being old. We did not make that move, so what we gotta ask now is why this village wants to charge us eleven dollars for water, but the amount of water we buy is a hundred and eighty million gallons. If you take eleven dollars an hour, times a hundred and eighty million gallons, is about two million dollars. I have to ask, why does the village need two million dollars to fund a one point two million dollar loan? It only costs us fifty thousand dollars a mo, or five thousand dollars a month. Their budget is only eight, eight, eight hundred thousand. Or appropriations is nine hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, why do we need two million out of the water department? And not only are we, is, is it two million for the water, the sewer department at eleven dollars, the same as water, also comes out to be another two million. How does the village want to generate four million dollars for an eight hundred thousand dollar, nine hundred thousand dollar water department? Well, you correct them. You're welcome to correct them.
Thank you.
You got three more minutes.
Go ahead.
Please, if I give my three minutes up to the gentleman?
Thank you.
I just, I, Mayor, I took some, you can't say this time, I mean, I'll charge you for civil rights violation. Make sure you know, make sure you know.
And I would like to say, uh.
You can concede your time to me?
You know, that was an employee told me to my face, I mean, that that employee said that he would outlast another employee. Now, can you imagine going to the CEO of Amazon and telling the vice president or the president if he gonna be there? Now, can you imagine that?
Well, you should have term limits, you should have been out four years ago. We should have term limits in this village.
People do that, you know what I'm saying, so.
You won't be a neck.
You know, as far as with water.
That's the next thing.
I think we just have to put on that antenna, the meters, you know, to keep the meters compatible, that's probably.
If it's the new meters are compatible.
Well, I would make it work, now I'm putting that antenna on.
Bring the treasurer, the accountant here to explain why these fees are necessary. Because from what I looked at from those little salary rates, it looked like you were gouging at every opportunity you could, two fifty to turn people's water off and on. How could you do that to somebody who can't pay their water bill, who are suffering, and then you charge them another two fifty to turn their water off and on? Other community only charge forty, sixty dollars, why two fifty?
Okay, if there's no further content, then I will ask for a motion to close the meeting, to the public.
Time to go.
I ask for a motion to close, let's get a motion to close, but trustee got saved.
He's not gonna answer your question, you're wasting your.
We should all leave.
We'll see you on the twenty-eighth then, that's the next meeting. And come there with the attorney, channel seven, channel two, channel five, Chukwem, channel nine, all of them.
And if you do change those rates.
FBI to see what's going on in the village of Burnham.
If you do change those rates, you have to ask, how can the village make those kind of mistakes and go back and change them? You have to ask, who thought of those numbers, why they were there, why they were passed? How could that be passed, an entire board passed that?
We have to continue with the meeting, in the mayor's report, um.
And for everybody here, I don't drink, I don't do drugs, so when I'm pulled over, I don't carry a gun. Because this man is addictive right here. I have got four tickets on one of my vehicles by him because he's addictive. I know I'm out of order.
And that's not a political way to do things. Not right.
I guess that's why I'm not wearing one.
Is the meeting over?
No. Well, I would like to say that, uh, I mean, our staff people, we have people that's on staff, uh, we had a member that came in, came inside. We have a member that came in from Camden City, we have two meters that stayed in port down about a down jog, and then transferred a meter from Kel City, and on the east meter, east meter, the bill was twenty-one thousand eight hundred ninety dollars. The west meter, the bill was thirty-six thousand nine hundred fifty dollars. Well, I mean, our experience, our treasurer here, she looked at that, she said, wow, this is all for, this is all for high, this is not correct. And so then, she told me about it, that I signed it to Mr. Andre Lewis, who's the temporary operator of the water station. So it took him about two weeks to get a report back, so the, I mean, the twenty-one thousand eight hundred ninety dollar bill actually ended up being five hundred fifty-seven dollars, and the one with thirty-six thousand nine hundred fifty dollars, I mean, actually being nine hundred twenty-five dollars. So between those two bills, and dealing with a person here who was experienced, and dealing with someone on the other end, that kind of who was new in town, didn't know what's going on, I mean, that was a fifty-eight thousand four hundred seventy-two dollar mistake that was made. And we was able to catch that, and of course, we did not pay that. Again, we, um, appreciate the people's input, and sometimes we have to make decisions that people don't agree with, and, um, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but we will, I mean, pursue this in the best manner we can, if there's something that we can do, and we certainly will try to do that. And we will adjust the sewer rate at the next meeting on the twenty-eighth, that'll be right here at the other talk. At this time, we will hear a report from Clerk Lewis.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I just have two things. It seems like a lot of the residents haven't purchased their vehicle sticker. We still have a lot of residents coming in to purchase them. We just need them to bring in their vehicle registration so we could have that on file. And they expire June thirtieth, so there is no renewal program, expires every June thirtieth. So just keep mindful that that happens on June thirtieth, and if you haven't purchased it, please do so, um, come to the village hall. And second.
Before you go any further, there's a ten dollar late fee for every month that is late. It's revenue, it's revenue.
The village, um, hall here will be closed at twelve PM on Friday, December twenty-second, and Friday, December twenty-ninth. And that is all I have.
Uh, thank you, Clerk, for your report, uh. Public educate and health, safety and welfare, trustee Graham.
I say good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Burnham Fire and Medical Report for the month of November. Uh, for the fire, there were twelve, there were six calls during the day, and there were six in the night. Analyst calls, they were very busy, there were eight day calls, and there were seventeen night calls. If you, if, um, you have a person in your household that is disabled, I recommend, I'm recommending that you fill out a form, it's called a Burnham Fire Department Residential Emergency Medical Information Sheet. It asks for your name and all persons in the household. Um, it states, do you have a disabled person living in your home, yes or no? If yes, what is the disability? Um, if you physically disabled, where does this person usually sleep? The first floor, northwest bedroom? Do you have oxygen tanks or concentrators in your home? Answer yes or no. Please note any special information you would like for us to have, like if you have pets in your home. But this is a very important form, and, um, you are releasing information on your own free will, but in case you have an emergency in your home, the fire department will know exactly who was in your home, and, and they will be able to assist you much faster. If you need a form, I have forms available, uh, tonight, or you can always ask at the front desk, and the ladies, the ladies will help you give you a form. Cedar was in our village on, uh, twelve, uh, December the fifth. Today, they were supposed to be here, from my understanding, they were, um, canceled due to the emergency, but they will be back in, um, our village December the sixteenth, is that correct, I have it? Did you have anything else you would like to add to that?
Um, they still have, um, slots available, and, um, they will be here this Saturday.
I, I will tell you.
So they will be here on Saturday to, to service the people that already had their appointments, and like I said, they still have slots open. And like I said, they still have slots open occasionally to inform them to come out and see them to boil.
So again, if you know of someone that is in need of, um, Cedar's help and people that are in between jobs or, um, they have the income guide on the back of the form, if you need this information, uh, we should have some available out, out front there. You can, um, or if you need one, I can get one for you. But if you need anyone that is in need of help for their lighter gas bill, please feel free to, um, just have it, that information. Let's see. As you know, for the retirees, the Social Security Administration has announced a benefit increase for the year twenty-eighteen. They, they went up two percent on the cost of living adjustment. That's the biggest increase in six years. And a twenty-seven dollar, twenty-seven dollars monthly increase. And that's for your average retired worker. Just a reminder, it is the holiday season and there are holiday shopping scams all around. As you know, if you order a package, a lot of packages are being stolen right off of your front yard, front porch. And also, there are a lot of fake shopping sites on, on the internet. So before clicking on a link, read very carefully. Watch for red flags such as miss, uh, spelled words. Or if you see a sale that seems so un, so untrue it may be. So just be careful when you're shopping on the, um, the internet. I do believe that that's it.
Trusty Greer for the report. And Andy.
Uh, Trusty Greer, what was the nature of those two fire calls?
The nature, let's see. Grass fire, cooking fires, two fire alarm activated malfunction, uh, and one miscellaneous call.
Also, um, let's, let's keep in mind that this is the season for fires. That, um, you want to have your C O two detector, make sure the batteries are good. You hear that constant ringing, that means your batteries need to be changed. If your C O two, everyone should have a C O two detector. If it's going off and you start to see symptoms, uh, have symptoms heading, make sure you call the nine-one-one and get out the house. Call nine-one-one, get out the house. Um, also, be also mindful that your fire extinguishers for your cooking, your grease fires are gonna be different than your fire extinguishers for a regular fire that doesn't, uh, contain grease. So just keep that in mind also. And make sure that your lights on your Christmas trees aren't faulty, that can cause a, a fire also. And, um, one more thing, I'm sorry. And don't leave your cars running with the, with the keys in ignition. That's, that's the number one way for car thefts. Don't, don't do that.
That's for sure.
Yeah, don't, don't do that. Lock your cars, um, and don't leave your cars, uh, your cars running with you not attending the vehicle. And, and be careful shopping because, uh, this is a huge time for, uh, for robberies and things like that. Be very, very, very aware of your surroundings.
Carbon dioxide.
And also, I do have a, uh, a form out there explaining Christmas trees and, uh, about the Christmas lights. So don't forget to get a copy, uh, when you leave out this evening. Thank you.
And Chief, uh, Chief Andy, before we go to the next report, will you just kind of like, you know, raise your board on your new toy?
Well, it's not a toy, uh, but thank you, I understand your sentiment, uh, Mr. Mayor. Um, for quite some time, the fire department's been looking for a vehicle to handle exclusively medical runs. You've probably noticed that we use, we've been using a small fire engine to handle our medical runs. Um, and it's, we have more, we have more medical runs than any other type of, uh, call, uh, that we have. And that vehicle's approaching twenty years old. And, uh, we, uh, we've been looking for another vehicle to handle medical runs, in particular, an ambulance style vehicle. So we did, um, of course, we were trying to do this with a budget because a new ambulance is well over a hundred thousand dollars and that's not something that, uh, we were prepared to spend. Uh, so we, we were alerted, uh, by somebody that's, uh, another fire department was taking out of service an ambulance that was already in very, very good shape, um, that, uh, we were gonna be able to purchase for a very, very small amount of money, comparatively speaking. And so we've done that. Um, we're sitting outside earlier, uh, today, and so we'll be putting that in service as quickly as we can uh, with, uh, our med, medical equipment. It won't, even though it is an ambulance, uh, that has a modular style ambulance, it's not going to transport, uh, people to the hospital because we have a contract with Bud's Ambulance for that, but it will be responding to all of our medical calls, it'll be taking the pressure off of our fire engines. Um, and, uh, it also will have the capabilities of housing people in the back to keep them warm on, for auto accidents. So slowly but surely, we'll get the thing in service, get some, the appropriate equipment on it. Uh, and hopefully, you'll never need it. Uh, but, uh, it's, 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 it's gonna, it's gonna be of use for quite some time and fill a need that we've had on the department for, for a long time.
It only cost you three thousand dollars.
Three thousand dollars, which... Thank you, Mayor.
Public Works and Villains, Trusty Claybrook.
Uh, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Public Works Department, they're, um, they've been doing a good job, an excellent job keeping out these clean, um, they have to leave floors. They have to leave floors out, and I witnessed them picking up leaves throughout the village. Um, all the snowplows and the, uh, trucks are serviced and, uh, getting ready for the winter and things like that. And, um, I think they're doing a pretty good job. And if you, if you, where do you live at?
It's all right, you know where I live at. You know where I live, down the boat. Now, you knew then.
I still know.
You brought me the car back.
I bought the car back.
Holla.
But you never called her.
I didn't have to call her. That's your job to see what's going on. You didn't call me to vote, but I voted for you. I appreciate you getting out there and checking that alley too, and checking up leaves.
They have been picking them up.
And sweeping the street.
And sweeping the street, that's right, that's right.
Let them cars move, they sit there and don't move, and you just go shh, shh, shh. And it's just there there.
No, they, well, they are out there. I do see them out there. Saginaw's a narrow street, and there's a lot of cars on Saginaw.
Yeah, I'm not saying they're not out there. What I'm saying, the cars should be moved in order for them to properly sweep the street from one side to the other.
Also, may I add, um...
And another thing, it's a shame that all of, everyone else left because it still was a meeting going on and still valuable information that could be heard. And, uh, you know, that, sometimes that shows how much they really do care about the village. If, if, you know, if you, you got complaints, then that's your right to have them. But at least stick around to the end of the meeting, so I commend everyone to stay.
Well, some people come to the meeting to obstruct the meeting. Some people come to the meeting just to criticize the officials, but that's okay.
Yeah. Yes, also, uh, may I add that, um, I'm sitting in front of my house on a hundred forty-second and Green Bay the other day, and I looked down the street and I was really amazed and I did not see not one piece of debris. So I really thank our Public Works Department. I did not see not one piece of debris. And I don't know, but then the next day was a bag of popping. But I went outside and I picked it up. I don't, I don't, you know, I do that in my surrounding area. I pick up the trash from the curb.
I do that too.
Yes, ma'am. And also, um, this is more so, uh, it takes Public Works and Public Safety. If there's a vehicle that looks like it's not moving and it's sitting there, feel free to call the non-emergency police line, eight-nine-one-two-one-two-two, uh, to report the abandoned vehicle. And they can put a tow notice on there. And if the vehicle is not moved from one location to another location to show that it's operable, then that vehicle can be towed if it's gonna impede with our cleanup. So you can definitely also do that.
I'd like to say something about that because my daughter...
I'm gonna say this real quick, and that the meeting is actually closed for the public, and then you don't know that, I'll let you go here and speak, but it's actually closed.
But I have to address this because my daughter has a car that's in front of my house. She was in a very serious car accident. As a matter of fact, it was a police chase on Sibley, and she was almost killed. So she's not able to drive her car. So I really would not want to have her car towed because she's in the house in a wheelchair and can't move it.
Is the car drivable?
Yes. But she can't drive it because...
Put a note on it, do you even put a note on the dash, let the police know this car is something to leave?
But I think the license plates are updated and stickers are updated. There's already some for, for them to tow it, and it's legal to be parked.
No, but I just wouldn't want anybody to see that it's not moving and they report it, and then it's towed.
Most of the cars are, they're... A notice are sent by, a notice would be sent to the, the, the place of residence where the vehicle is registered to, that it is, uh, move your vehicle. And if it's moved from one side of the street to the next side of the street, so that they can clean, clean the streets and, and not have that big pile of snow on that one location.
My suggestion would be, just make sure you also talk to the chief of police so that, uh...
Excuse Mr. Paul, I just have a quick question. I know you said it's closer to the park. Can I please, can you please, just for you to put a rock on the corner of Saginaw and, and a hundred forty second street? 'Cause I got some pressed truck tire marks on the grass, that's why I did a decoration.
And we put something there for you before, didn't we?
No, but the truck ran over it and it busted the whole, uh, it tore the whole thing up.
I think we should charge you for that.
But, but can you put like a big rock there or something?
Well, we certainly would try to take a look at that, but we have, uh, um, and some concern by putting, uh, a rock on the parkway because the, the parkway is actually a natural inclination, so to speak, especially with the vegetation, the grass. And then once the village puts something there that wasn't normally there, and then if a car or something comes through there and runs into it, then now we have changed the form of that location and that could create a lot of damage on the village. And otherwise, it would be like if we cut a tree down on the parkway
Right, right.
and we didn't cut it all the way down, and then if we let those stump there, then now we've changed the form of nature, and then that could be a problem.
Are you gonna put another, uh, flower pot there?
No, you said my wife said no. I mean, we'll try to come up with something.
Okay, all right.
All right, thank you. Is that it, Trusty Claybrook? That's all I have. All right, thank you, Trusty Claybrook. And Trusty Garcia, all this and plan.
Discussion of consideration of and taking action to pass or not pass resolution twenty-seventeen R zero zero five, resolution approving and authorizing the execution of the twenty-seventeen Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program.
Now, I had a question about that, I believe that this is the...
We didn't hear, we didn't hear. We can't hear you.
Greenway, um, there was a last, the last meeting and explained that, uh, they don't want to tell.
The director of the old land project was here last meeting and explains these, uh, trying to apply for grants or some additional funding. Uh, he gets some more money on behalf of the village and see if he can, uh, approve this, uh, project. But, uh, ultimately, they're doing that on behalf of the village. Over at Burnham and Brainerd and a row of tracks. And this is an authorization allowing him to proceed with that. And if he can get the money, uh, sometime in the spring, he can uphold the application. So, uh, he made a presentation last meeting, and we'll follow it. Those of you who weren't here, it has to do with this Greenway project connecting the bicycle path to the office of Burnham County, all the way through to Tom Frey, Indiana. There's one area with a South Shore Southbound Ravello Tracks across over Burnham Avenue that they're trying to address.
Okay, thanks, attorney, uh, and then of course, um, proceed.
Is he talking to just you or is he...
They got the microphone. And we're being quiet.
Motion to cap resolution twenty-seventeen R zero zero five, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of the twenty-seventeen Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program application for the village of Burnham.
Then the motion will be approved by Trusty Garcia, we need a second? I'll second it. Is that by Trusty Cap or by Detective Row?
Trusty Cap?
Yes.
Trusty Bonner?
Yes.
Trusty Garcia?
Yes.
Trusty Greer?
It was concerning the Southern Railway Company on...
What number is that?
The ordinary, the ordinary, the resolution.
Yeah, the first one. Okay, so we, we need to have a better way there with avoid, uh, problem. Right now, it's, uh, Ford, the Ford vehicles on tourist. Their loading facilities have not been developed and, and they have a blockage there.
No, you don't have to have that bridge.
No, but this is for the Burnham.
It's the Burnham Greenway.
This is just for the Burnham Greenway, the bicycle path. It's to get money to build those two bridges, to pursue those two bridges to go over the railroad track.
Okay, Trusty Greer, what there's was saying that there's blockages there because also trains are stopping and unloading at the Ford plant.
Yes.
That's what, what they need to...
Yes, 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 yes.
I, I also like to, uh, make a comment. Uh, looking at this, uh, resolution, I really, really, really hope our representation in talking with the Ford, Ford and Moore Company and the railways, that we have good representation because I really feel like, as a community, we're being taken advantage of by these two large companies. And one, they're blocking our traffic there, but they don't want to give us any money to build this and, and blocking it. And we used to be able to write citations that generated a lot of income and, and that was taken away. So I really hope that they have, put on us as a small community and say, hey, well, 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 um, step, step up and, and, and give some money for this, uh, for this passage.
Okay, well, I don't know if you're aware of that.
It's that is for Ford, it's rocking, it's the trains.
Right.
They might be unloading for Ford.
Exactly.
But Ford has no control over that.
Yeah, I don't know.
It's the trains.
And also, I don't know if you're aware of that.
Ford could have a lot of money for that Chicago bridge.
Yeah, I mean, well, that helped us a lot too, you know, so...
But Chicago puts quite a bit of money compared to what Ford put in. And they, and, and that was in the works for like ten, fifteen years.
I'm just saying, I, I hope that we have really good representation so that we're fairly represented.
But the railroad is, the railroad is not wanna put any, uh, missing funds.
I know.
So...
So I understand, I understand, I just hope that we have some good representation.
Yeah, we, we'll always do our best.
Speaking, he, he was telling us how we have attorneys, how he's been working on this for how many years. I mean, he's been here for, for other, like...
Right, and it's because the railroad's have a lot of money, so they can actually keep fighting this.
Okay.
Okay, so, Trusty Greer? Trusty Greer? Trusty Greer, yes, or maybe? Trusty Richardson?
Yes.
Trusty Claybrook?
Yes. Motion passed, uh, proceed, Trusty Garcia.
Discussion of consideration of and taking action to pass or not pass resolution twenty-seventeen R zero zero six, resolution adopting a policy prohibiting sexual harassment for the village of Burnham.
And then a question of concern about that?
Motion to pass resolution twenty-seventeen R zero zero six, resolution adopting a policy prohibiting sexual harassment for the village of Burnham.
And as a motion only approved by Trusty Garcia, we need a second to approve the policy to prohibit any sexual harassment on the job for the village. So a motion approved by Trusty Garcia and a second by Trusty Claybrook, Detective Row.
Trusty Cap?
Yes.
Trusty Bonner?
Yes.
Trusty Garcia?
Yes.
Trusty Greer?
Yes.
Trusty Richardson?
Yes.
Trusty Claybrook?
Yes. Okay, item number three, uh, they, uh, process the deal with the, uh, Port County, um, Land Bank. And the purpose of this program is to, you know, for the, uh, village to engage and participate into this so we can try to eliminate right in the community. We have certain properties of vacant, we've been vacant for a long time. I think it's one by your house.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, the taxes are paid on that. As long as that's been vacant, somebody is paying the tax.
But even though they're paying the taxes on it, in the, with that house being in the condition that it's in, isn't there something village can do about that? Either fix it up or tear it down.
I mean, that would be another perspective, but, um, I mean, for this program goes, it would not provide by, uh, the taxes have to be delinked for at least two years. The water bills have been delinking for two years. Have to have complaints and, and issues like that in the community, so we are putting together a little... So we are putting together a list now, I mean, to submit for this program.
I'm just so confused about that because...
I talked to the meeting.
Okay.
Resolution, a motion to pass resolution twenty seventeen R zero zero seven. Resolution to join and participate in the South of Burnham Land Bank Engagement Authority. And approving and authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Burnham. And the South of Burnham Land Bank Engagement Authority.
So I'll do, you got it. Okay, then either second.
Especially the truth you explained it.
You got it.
Someone will, I have a question.
Okay.
How many of these properties do we currently have in our report?
Um, well, we don't have as many as I thought, you know, because some of them, you know, they've been vacant for a long time. And we felt that they would be eligible, and I did the research to find out that the taxes are paid, like I was saying about that. If the tax has been paid, uh, more than two years, it's not delinked and we can't submit it. So right now, uh, I process seven days with the business not paying.
Okay, and with this, so the village says that they're, uh, that they're going to proceed with abandonment proceedings. So if it's a, a, a situation where the premise is occupied, but the taxes are in a rear. Then that would not qualify for abandonment proceedings because it's not abandoned.
Right.
If someone's actually residing there.
Right.
That's correct? Even, uh...
And if they would have to be, um, to get addicted, then it would have to be, um, if the tax is more than two years and the water bill has not been paid. And we got complaints from the community, or, you know, police complaints, probably was, uh, billing department complaints. Then that would have qualified, I would guess.
Okay, so it's, uh, more than two years to link one on taxes and, and water bill and it's abandoned.
Yes.
And my understanding with this agreement is that we can opt out at any time?
You can opt out.
There's a provision for opting out. We have to give, I think, sixty days' notice. There's a provision to opt out.
Sixty days' notice?
I think that's, let's see, the thirty or sixty, but you have to give a notice that you want to opt out.
And does it have to go on a vote with the board, that board? For us to opt out?
This board first.
Okay, but do they have to vote on for us to opt out?
No.
Or we just have to give the...
We, we have to give a notice that we want to.
It's not gonna cost us anything, but they will cover all the legal fees and all the costs and that, so. And once they flip the property and get it back on the tax road, then they get their money back. You don't have to sacrifice.
My only concern is that it's gonna be abandoned properties. Not properties with people living in there just because they're late on their taxes. It's abandoned properties.
Yes.
Okay.
There's a website you can go to, South of Burnham Land Bank.
Oh, I've done a lot of research on it and, um, like that, uh, what was that, that Char House, um, Bogars? That's been vacant since twenty eleven and since the inception of this, uh, land bank trust, uh, in twenty twelve. The Village of Homewood had opted in and I don't see any updated status on it. I know it takes sometimes months and months and months to go through these proceedings, but, um, and then, uh, I, I see that Dalton is a, uh, member of this land bank trust. And they have over five hundred abandoned houses in their inventory and I only saw two houses for...
Need a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Garcia, by trustee Coro.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
You want a second, trustee Cap?
Discussion of consideration of and taking action on ordinance two thousand seventeen dash O dash zero one one. An ordinance levying taxes for the fiscal year beginning May first, two thousand seventeen and ending April thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. Of the Village of Burnham, Cook County, Illinois, six oh six three three, dash two zero eight one.
Can we do back the motions after?
I have to read the motion first, right? I move that the corporate authorities of the Village of Burnham estimate the village's aggregate levy for two thousand seventeen for the purpose of compliance with the truth in taxation law as being two million eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars.
Any questions or comments on that?
So then, I'll make the motion to pass ordinance two zero one seven dash O dash zero one one. An ordinance levying taxes for the fiscal year beginning May first, two thousand seventeen and ending April thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. Of the Village of Burnham, Cook County, Illinois, six oh six three three, dash two zero eight one.
Trustee Cap, has made a motion to pass the tax level, so we have a second, please?
Second.
A second by trustee Garcia, by trustee Coro.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Motion passed, finance trustee Cap.
Good evening, everyone, I'm getting my own spot. Discussion of consideration of and taking action on authorizing the payment of this month's bills when funds become available.
Do we have a motion on our phone?
I have a question. What, uh, what do we collect in, uh, water fund?
It's written, she has it, she has that number, I have it.
Not that sheet.
I don't know if we have it for the month, we have it for the, we have it for the month, we have it for the whole, uh, period.
We have it through, we have it from the fiscal year from May first to November third.
It's not for the individual month, it's for the...
We don't, we don't count for the monthly, for the, um, for the accounts, um... So we did a report of fiscal ending, year, um, year-to-date fiscal? So, but we do tally every month, right?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, but it wasn't done by the month, but yeah.
You just don't have that figure in front of you. No, we have a different recording of fiscal end.
I have lots of those copies, but not with me.
Four hundred forty-three thousand nine hundred and nineteen... Four... Four hundred and forty-three thousand nine hundred and nineteen.
And that's from, uh, May, May till now?
Yes, so the end of November this year.
And then what the expenses for this?
Still two hundred and eleven thousand in the whole.
So then the expenses are for the water fund?
Well, two thou- two hundred and eleven, uh, six hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Two hundred and eleven thousand.
We're short for the fund of two hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and nineteen.
Make the motion to approve the payment of last month's funds become available, so we have a second, please?
A second, a second.
A second by trustee Claybrook, by trustee Coro.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to abstain because I'd like a more detailed report of our bills in and our bills out. So I'm gonna abstain for now.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
This question on what bills?
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
This question on what bills?
All of them. Meaning that what are, what are our utility bills, what are our payroll, what do we collect in sewer, what do we collect in garbage? What do we pay in garbage? I'd like more instead of just, okay, we're paying bills. Trustee Richardson has a report for you.
Who?
Okay.
So, trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes. Thank you, motion passed. Sometimes, um, it's almost like we have a leak in the building. You know, a lot of, um, records and things, um, um, you know, like internally and, um... Some people just kind of, you know, go downstairs and record it and not like that.
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
I'll discuss it then. How many utilities, trustee Richardson?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Park and Recreation, trustee Bonner.
Yes, your, um, winter catalog should be mailed out, um, the end of this month. And if for whatever reason that you don't receive it, uh, you can call the, visit my V C M P D dot com. And, uh, there's a list of all the recreational activities.
You say it's gonna be mailed out?
This month, yes, ma'am.
For the resident, all residents?
Well, not mailed out, they'll be delivered, they deliver them, they don't mail them.
Thank you, trustee Bonner. Uh, presentation, now then a presentation, a petition, is there any communication, a memorial, a resignation? An unfinished business? Uh, new, uh, new business? Trustee Cap, would you read that, please?
Discussion of consideration of ordinance nu- two thousand seventeen dash O dash zero zero seven. An ordinance adjusting the village's sewer rates in order to facilitate a loan with the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency. An ordinance amending chapter eighty-six taxation article twelve. Sewer use and services tax section eighty-six dash four twenty-two. Tax imposed eighty-six dash four twenty-three. Tax rate eighty-six dash four twenty-four. Payment of sewer tax eighty-six dash four twenty-five. Water meter readings eighty-six dash four twenty-seven. Termination of service for non-payment eighty-six dash four twenty-eight. Lean for sewer use tax eighty-six dash four thirty-one. Installation and connection of waistline service to public sewer eighty-six dash four thirty-three. Penalty for violation of articles slash administrative adjudication of the code ordinances, Village of Burnham, Illinois.
So trustee, um, amending that to the sewer.
Thank you, meeting, twenty-eight. Uh, the, uh, what do you propose then to...
I'm gonna just go with that we made a mistake when we, we passed that bill and I'm gonna stick to that, that I, we weren't aware of the sewer rate. So we're gonna remove that eleven dollar a month sewer, eleven dollar a thousand sewer rate that was in the ordinance? Cause I think we were unaware of that.
I have a question. You're, you're part of the ordinance committee, right? Did you guys get together when you guys were creating these ordinances?
No, that one kind of still fine. I didn't read that one until I asked for the meeting. I made a mistake with the sewer rate.
And, and you said that, uh, we didn't get together, because I'm part of the ordinance committee. So we didn't discuss it prior to the meeting? Which we probably should have done.
Right, we should have, that one got biased. So that's, I think it was an error.
So this is gonna be on the next agenda? So everybody has a copy of it? So if we wanna go through it, so then you can do your changes if you're gonna do changes or whatever is being said, so...
We're just gonna remove that eleven dollar per thousand rate and just go back with the dollar a thousand that we currently have.
And then that was a ten dollar tag.
Put a ten dollar sewer, sewer use fee in there.
So the trustees that voted on it and the, um, trustee Richardson and Greer, they're going to motion to rescind that ordinance zero zero seven.
We're gonna amend it.
We're gonna be on the agenda to make sense.
We're gonna amend it, we're gonna amend it, right?
But it's gonna be the same, so it's not amending, it's gonna be ten dollars.
Now, the eleven dollars is gonna be put back at one dollar per thousand, the ten dollars.
So we're leaving the ordinance, we're just gonna amend that price amount?
Right.
Yeah. Everything has to do with sewage, right?
Right, that's just sewage, that's sewage.
Just the sewage. So can we go through this so that we can all be in agreement, what needs to be...
Well, I could, we want to just go back to what we were charging.
Right.
The one dollar a thousand, like we were, that's the same rate Cal City charges also, because I checked.
Okay.
And then we're gonna have a ten dollar sewer, sewer use fee on there, monthly.
That's new, right?
Yes, and that'll pay for all the maintenance of the sewers and sewer cleaning and street cleaning and...
So if, uh...
Once again, we'll try to get you, uh, sewer in the alley back there. Thank you.
That's the...
After all these years this time.
So if, um, so with the, with the water meter readings, if the water meter reads, um, say three thousand gallons for that month. Then the resident will be billed for sewer rate at three thousand for that month.
That'd be three dollars.
Three dollars.
Three dollars. And then it'd be the ten dollars, so it'd be thirteen dollars.
We probably should remove that fee for turning the sewer back on too, because there is no...
Hold on, that'd be taken out also.
That's what I'm asking, so you guys have to pack it, if we can all agree. So the only thing that's gonna stay is section eighty-six dash four two three, number one, rate from eleven to a thousand, per thousand. Can everyone read this on it? If you can send me a copy, it is in my mailbox. It's right there. Okay, thank you. It has a... And then, of course, that, that box for the biannual change will, will change on us. For the biannual increase?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, that'd be taken out. That's it, we take it out.
That'd be taken out.
Yeah, then all be taken out.
Right, that's why I'm saying, so we can all...
We're just gonna go a flat dollar, a thousand, like we've been paying, but we're gonna add that ten dollar a month sewer rate.
Out of that amendment is gonna, is going to reflect it, everything else is...
Just gonna fee back, a hundred and twenty-five dollars, right? Well, it was one twenty-five and one twenty-five and it didn't make any sense. It was like, it was, it's actually, it was copied from it, it was like copied.
I think it's over.
Kind of the water gets copied to the sewer.
Okay, so could we, uh...
So that'd be on the next...
Number two, uh...
Discussion of consideration of and taking action to approve or not approve, to reschedule the regular scheduled, regular board meeting of the president and board of trustees of the Village of Burnham, the county Illinois, to Thursday, December twenty-eighth, twenty seventeen, at seven P M. I, um, I motion to move the meeting from Tuesday to Thursday, December twenty-eighth, at seven P M.
Trustee Bonner is making a motion to change the regular meeting from December fourth to sixth, two thousand seventeen, to December twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen, at seven P M. Can we have a second, please? A second by trustee Richardson, by trustee Coro.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Um, can we have a schedule of that? I didn't hear one out of my email. Discussion of consideration of and taking action, adopt and not adopt, on the schedule of the regular board meetings of the president and board of trustees of the Village of Burnham. That's for twenty eighteen? So it's the second and the fourth, Tuesdays of each month?
But you'll post it up right away, right?
I, I motion to adopt the schedule of the regular board meetings of the president and board of trustees of the Village of Burnham.
A second. Okay, by the clerk, take a roll.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Trustee Greer, I'm sorry.
We have, um, a gentleman here who are interested in opening up a business on a hundred and forty-fifth and Torrance. So they're looking for a zoning permit and we've been talking to them about them cleaning up the area. Um, they're gonna make sure that all the old auto there are, are gone by the end of the week. And also they're gonna be putting in some new lights, um, some new signs, you know, that everything's gonna be up to code. And they're hoping to get all that done by the end of the week. We're waiting on a, on a zoning, we're gonna put in for a zoning permit, but as I was talking to the lawyer. There's some stuff that he has to find out before we go any further and he can explain a little bit to you of what needs to be done. And he's gonna make some calls tomorrow morning. So can you explain to them what we're waiting on?
There's some issues because this village is opted out of the minimum wage ordinance by the county cook. I haven't seen the documents that you apparently given to village hall yet, but I will see them sometime tomorrow. Now, look at them. Mayor and I attended a conference with over twenty-five, thirty mayors of all the communities around here. Mayor and I attended a conference with over twenty-five, thirty mayors of all the communities around here in objection to what the county is doing and now making the villages do. Certify that we are in compliance with all county ordinances before these permits are issued out. We cannot give that certification if we've opted out. And the question is, if you, by giving you a certi- certificate, are we opting back into the minimum wage ordinance of the county? The South Riverland Mayors and Managers Association was supposed to get back to the mayor and myself. I haven't heard anything, and it's just like a stopgap measure was supposed to come about at the end of November. I asked the mayor during this evening's festivities, uh, had he heard anything? And he hasn't gotten anything either.
And you know, this is for the, uh, for the zoning, right?
Yeah, we already attended over there, South River, and, and over there, and it was supposed to get back, because that's where you had the assessor and the county commissioners, and fighting, but they were not fighting, but they were disagreeing. And we'll, we'll try to get that information for you. If you want to remain here after the meeting, I'd be happy to talk to you a little bit more, but we have some issues because I don't know if the board of trustees and the mayor wishes to take and have it affect everybody else. And if there's a way that we can do it, we certainly want to help you. But we can't penalize other people, uh, if they're relying on our ordinance that we passed to opt out. So I'm looking for an avenue, and I don't know the answer to that. If you want to remain, I'm very patient, is that through? A marathon meeting is going on for over an hour and a half, well, it's almost three hours, two and a half hours. I'll be happy to remain and talk to you and get whatever information you want to tell me, so I can understand what you're trying to do, okay? All I know, I got a zoning issue.
What kind of business?
What kind of business?
What's the address?
What kind of business is it? Bring anything in here.
We're in a lot of parks? Is there, is there a rush that this wasn't on the agenda, that it's presented today, going on the agenda for the next meeting? Is there some type of a timeline rush or something?
No, usually when we have a lot of business life, we don't necessarily, so they put it on the agenda.
Is there a, a business there now currently?
Well, it was, yeah, but it's not operational right now.
Oh, and they're proposing to put the same type of business there, right?
Yeah, yeah, right.
So it's our resource, right?
Right, so we would think it really shouldn't be that, that much efficient, but I don't want to be a challenge.
Even, even when you're fighting for something. The most, the issue was whether or not you're operating, you know, the application.
We voted on it, opt out.
You've got businesses in this town, which you don't want to...
Exactly. And we have to do it at that time, but, uh, okay.
Next question, when you got competition, every mayor out there.
They are, they're more senior.
Williams, Williams is very eloquent, but loves to take it with the union, loves to have union jobs in town, but unfortunately, everybody can't have a union job, and the proximity of this, just like our community.
You're kind of cold.
With the state of Indiana, businesses are going there rather than located here. And if we stab somebody, uh, we want to keep them. Not stab, but we have somebody that, you know, invests in our community, we want to keep them. That's what the, all the mayors were interested in, though. They are in unison against what the county is requiring us to do.
I'm going to say this, now I asked for a motion to adjourn now.
Wait, I have one more idea. This is a man walking sidewalk, I think it's one, one thirty, fifty, maybe. There's a man with like blocks under his tires or something. And it's, uh, like, you can't drive a bike down the sidewalk, where people complain when they go to church, it's blocking the sidewalk. On the west side. Park up in the park, they're going to block the sidewalk.
Give the address, please.
Okay, we'll take a look at it. Um, the last thing before we adjourn, uh, I attended a meeting last night down at one hundred thirty-fifth and Torrance, you know, concerning the, um, the business was going to be, um, filling the rail card for the C T A, and it was always under my impression that all the jobs was going to be union jobs, and, but ultimately explained last night that the first ten jobs was going to one union, and the second ten jobs was going to another union, and all the other jobs would be for open bids. There'll be a hundred and forty jobs at that location to start out with. Unfortunately, they probably not going to start another year. I meant a year and a half, I'm sorry. But, um, other than that, trustee Garcia is familiar with it also. And so that was kind of good and positive, and all that, um, that the people not necessarily have to be in a union, because a lot of people are not. And the people, a lot of people are going to have to do the, I mean, the money to pay for it, you know, so.
Well, but once they start working, they're going to be union.
Oh, yes.
They have to be, because they're going to be part of a union.
Right.
The first group are going to come from the union, the first twenty or so. So what we also do is we have a program, if people are interested in going back to school and training for these jobs, I have a program, they can pay for someone to go up to two years and get an associate's degree, and we pay for that and their books, we pay for tuition and books at a hundred percent. Everyone's interested, so if you know anyone that's interested in that, have them give me a call, you know, and I can, I can sit down with them and discuss this.
Or even they could come to the meeting. Okay, if you have no further comments, I'll ask for... I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
Make the motion to adjourn?
The motion for let trustee Claybrook to adjourn, we need a second?
I'll second.
A second by trustee Cap?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Thank you, lead of the adjourn, and thank you for coming.